This is the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for the municipality of Anchorage, June 10, 2013. I need to make an announcement, and that is we are having technical difficulties, and we have no way of recording tonight's meeting. So there'll be no granicus to be able to refer to. The secretary is going to take notes, but if, for any reason, you feel that that's not adequate, and you would like to postpone to the next available meeting, we're going to offer you that choice, and that would be on the part of the commission without any additional charge for postponement. So I wanted to make that announcement at the very beginning of this meeting, and you can think about that, and we'll address it under Special Order of Business after we do the roll call. May I have the roll call, please?
Ms. Yoshimura?
Here.
Mr. Pruse?
Here.
Mr. Ferguson?
Here.
Mr. Spring?
Here.
Mr. Mulcahy?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Dean?
Here.
Mr. Parks?
Yes, I'm here.
Mr. Robinson?
Here.
Thank you very much. We have eight commissioners present. The minutes of the meetings, I would entertain a motion for approval or any changes to the minutes for December 10, January 7, May 6, and May 13.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we accept the minutes for December 10, January 7, May 6, and May 12 as written.
Thank you very much. That motion is by Commissioner Parks. I have no screen, so may I have a seconded by Commissioner Ferguson? Thank you very much. Is there any objection to the motion? Seeing and hearing none, that motion is approved. Under Special Order of Business disclosures, Vice Chair Parks, would you please do the disclosures?
Yes, Madam Chair. Commissioner Spring?
I have no disclosures. Thank you.
Mr. Dean?
None. Thank you.
Mr. Pruse?
For the record, I was absent April 1, so I'll abstain from Resolution 13-014.
Thank you. Commissioner Robinson?
Yes, for the record, I was absent from the June 3 meeting and will abstain from voting on Resolutions 2013-25 and 2013-26.
Thank you. Commissioner Ferguson?
For the record, on, I don't know if this falls within disclosure or not, but on the Auerberg Avenue Extension Case 2013-093, I have two separate disclosures on that one. First, that is coming off the Alieska Prince, it's on, it's coming off the Alieska Prince property. I was involved in the construction of the Alieska Prince property back in roughly 1996 or '94, I guess, and I have no interest in it, but I was involved in that construction. The applicant's representative is Dow HKM. I currently have, or currently managing, one contract and will be managing a second contract with Dow HKM on a totally, absolutely unrelated project. And I don't feel it's a conflict, but I have no interest, I mean, it's a firm, but two different projects.
And what is the wish of the commission? I think he should participate. Okay?
Okay.
I don't think of any issues.
All right. Is there a second?
Okay. And Ms. Dean's seconded?
All right.
Thank you very much.
Is there any?
All right.
Thank you. Mr. Mulcahy?
Yes, for the record, I was absent from the April 1, 2013, meeting, and I will abstain from voting on Resolution 2013-014.
Thank you. Ms. Shuhur?
Connie? All right. For the record, I was absent from the June 3, 2013, meeting, will abstain from voting on Resolutions 2013-025 and 2013-026.
And I have none.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. Is there anyone here who wishes to postpone this evening as a result of our technical difficulties? All right. Seeing and hearing no one, then we'll just continue on. Under Special Order of Business, C2, Information Item, Case 2013-093, Context-Sensitive Solution Transportation Project Concept Report, Auerberg Avenue Extension in Girdwood. May we have the presentation?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
This is an information item only. There is no recommendation.
Okay.
There is, there was no presentation planned. It was just for the commission members' information. Ms. McConnell, who wrote the memo, is not here because it's basically for your information. And there is no, there is no action required on this item.
Are there any questions? Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes, I have two questions. What staff recommendation do I, what do I do?
Well, if there's no one here to answer any questions...
The paragraph, the last sentence of the paragraph, if, after you have read this, if you have any questions, please contact the petitioner for Alieska Resort Development, LLC, or petitioner's representative Dow HKM. There is a representative from Dow HKM if you have questions on this tonight, but no action is being requested of the commission tonight. So it's the wish of the commission whether they would like to ask Mr. Potter, who is present, any questions.
Commissioner Ferguson, I think you do have some questions?
I do, and I would like to ask him, but I guess I've got a question. About a month ago, we had a context-sensitive report on 48th and A or something like that, and we had drawings, and we had a presentation, and we had discussion. I'm a little bit more than confused on why the two standards, but if Mr. Potter will wander up to the mic, he may be able to answer my questions.
Through the chair, Mr. Ferguson? This is not at the design study report. It's basically a concept report. It's not a design study report that a presentation is made at that time.
Will this come back to us as a design study report?
Yes, it will.
Thank you, Mr. Potter.
All right. But since you're here, Mr. Potter?
Just simply to indicate that we are here to answer any questions that you may have. It is a concept level that basically gives you an idea of what the project is, what it's about, and lets you look at and review the comments from the local community that are incorporated. This is simply about a 2,000 lineal foot extension of what is now Auerberg Road. It will have a separated trail, just like the existing part of the Auerberg Road. The cross-section is essentially as currently exists, with two lanes one each way, shoulders ditched on each side, and a separated trail, to the extent that we can utilize the existing access trail that was developed by the Nordic Ski Group in Girdwood out to this area. It does reside in the same corridor that was approved by the Assembly back in 1994. At that point, there was a study done that determined that if there were going to be, there was going to be a road and utility extension to the Winter Creek area for future development of either additional ski areas or whatever, that it made sense to identify a common corridor for all those to occur, so there weren't swaths cut all over the bottom of the valley. So the road, as you see it depicted on page 18 of the concept report, effectively shows where that goes within, and it does stay within the recognized corridor that was adopted by ordinance, by the Assembly. You can see where the ski trail goes out. We will be trying to keep the utilization of the existing carved-up area by the wetland up at the north end. Put the trail right on that, so it will separate from the road quite a bit at that location. Probably the biggest issue here is wetlands, avoidance of wetlands, and the corridor that was originally approved goes around the wetlands at this location. There is a desire expressed to place some parking. The municipality and the Girdwood Nordic Ski Club put a trail in a 5K ski loop for racing and recreation, and they are looking to provide parking as potentially part of this project as well. So funding is set and limited to what the amount was granted by the legislature, but if we can stay within that budget, put in 20 to 25 parking spaces, that's the goal, so that that is very close to the start of the 5K ski loop. And it sets up the road for further extension in the future. Sewer water utilities will be extended, and that's about it. It's acting, it's being a little bit longer in concept than was originally planned because of a complex of streams that come down at just about the corner of Alieska's property, where you see the road corridor across the tip of their property. There's a bunch of streams that go perpendicular to the road corridor and one that goes parallel to it. So we're kind of threading the needle to get perpendicular crossings for fish patches because several of the streams are anathemas, so...
I like, I like the idea because there's multiple owners working together to make this work. It provides needed access. I think that's great. My two questions. One is, who will maintain this when it's finished?
The, it will be in a public right-of-way and public use easement. After the two-year warranty, it will be maintained by the Girdwood Road Service Board.
Okay, thank you. Do you know yet, or when will you know whether this road will be lit or not?
It is set to be lit as it, the existing Auerberg is, so there will be street lighting. And at this time, the separated trail on the existing Auerberg, as you know, is set quite a ways into the woods, and it has more pedestrian-level lighting along that corridor. And it seems to be appropriate for the area.
Will the lighting of this new road be equivalent to the existing Auerberg lighting, or do you know if...
Yes.
Thank you. No further questions?
All right. Thank you very much. Commissioner Robinson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question was, and you alluded to it, Mr. Potter, but the, you know, a lot of the conversation, it seemed like revolved around the existing trails or the new trails and how this trail linked in with the, with the new ski trail. But it wasn't clear to me on any of the maps really, you know, where, where those trails exactly were. You just said that you could kind of see it on page 18.
Yeah.
I guess what I would say is maybe you can point it out a little bit for me so I understand it, but, but as the design study report comes back, if we can just be really clear how those linkages work or don't work, that would be really helpful.
Correct. Now, we've been working with all the groups, and the Winter Creek Trail actually will, is just to the right of the parking lot bulb. So there's, we've got a little bit more developed design right now with some additional wetlands information that we have that actually will tie directly from the parking area with a short trail section up to the Winter Creek Trail. So there will be good linkages, as well as linkages directly from the wetland area where existing trails, wintertime trails, link up to that area as well. That will be included in the DSR.
Great. Thank you.
And we're scheduled to come back in August for that review by the Planning Commission.
All right. Thank you very much. Are there any other questions? I have to do this visually. I don't see any. Thank you very much, Mr. Potter.
Thank you.
All right. So there is no action that needs to be taken at this time, so seeing and hearing no more questions, we'll move on to the consent agenda. May I have a motion for approval?
Madam Chair, make a motion that we approve the agenda. The consent agenda is written.
All right. Thank you. I'm looking for a second. Seconded by Commissioner Ferguson. Are there any, is there any one that wants to pull anything? Okay. Seeing and hearing none. Is there any objection to the motion, to the resolutions? Seeing and hearing none. Those resolutions are approved. We're moving on now to unfinished business and actions of the public hearing in regarding to Case 2012-104, the municipality of Anchorage, elements of the comprehensive plan for Chughatch Access Plan. I have been recused from this case because I own property that is identified as potential accesses to Chughatch State Park. So I'm now going to turn the chair over to Vice Chair Parks. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess that this meeting, we have an opportunity to talk a little bit about how we want to carry on with this, and I'll take comments from, or a motion, if so desired, from somebody in the, in the commission.
Would you like to take, can I ask a procedural question, please?
Sure.
I'm trying to make sure that I understand what we're dealing with right now, and we've had a lot of information. Am I correct that the most current information we have is an April 1 memo on the Chughatch Access Plan, followed by a May 13 memo on the access plan? Staff?
Through the chair, Mr. Ferguson, the Tobis Planning Department. You're correct, and in anticipation of your questions, I've brought a repackaged set of items for you, so you're sure what's what. So if I may, I'll drop these off right now for you. They basically consolidate everything into one package for you, so you don't have to go back and forth.
Before you hand those out, I got one more question.
Okay.
I have a Chughatch Access Plan Amendment dated May 9. I have a Chughatch Access Plan Amendment Attachment A dated May 13. Are those the same document, or what is the difference?
May 13 is the proper document to have. I'd have to look and see what you've got in your May 9.
It looks similar, but I'm trying to, I mean, we're at the end of the food chain. And try, and when you get a, a case like that that's been postponed and just work sessions, the paperwork is voluminous. And so I'm just trying to make sure I understand it. So it is May 13 and April 1.
That's correct.
And the attached map.
That's correct. And if you'd like, I can give you all of that in one package here.
That would be helpful, I think.
Okay.
What? If you make... I'll pass that which on that. Thank you. Hey, Dean? Yeah, that's... Dean? So it replaces these two?
Yeah.
And I probably jumped the gun a little bit.
I guess I should have asked for a staff report rather than we jumped into it, and I apologize for that. So if you would like to give us a staff report to get us up to date.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Basically, I just wanted to remind everybody where we are, and the packet I just handed out consolidates amendments that have come in since September 13, the original public hearing. So that packet you have tonight consolidates all amendments which include the original staff recommendations from September and then future staff recommendations through May 13. It includes a resolution from the Watershed Commission. It includes several comments and items worked on with staff, with Commissioner Phelps. It includes Parks and Rec comments, and I'm looking, and it includes a table with our responses and recommendations for amendments based on the public process. So if you recall, in December, the December 1st meeting, I believe it was, we had closed the original public hearing. Mr. Phelps had worked through with staff to finalize amendments to address the commission's concerns, as well as some of the public comment. And at that meeting, we came to conclusion there were two outstanding issues. One was notification, public notification, and one was concern about the map quality, which we addressed in subsequent packets to you, and we also ended up with a second public hearing earlier this spring. So everything that you see in that packet, along with the base document, is what you are deliberating on for adoption?
Base document being?
That's correct. The plan, the plan document.
Can I ask a, so, what would be the ramifications if we were to postpone this while we review what you provided us tonight? Would it really hurt if we waited another session?
I'm sorry. What was the question?
If we moved to postpone, so we have a chance to review everything you provided us tonight and make sure...
Well, I just wanted to remind you that nothing you got here is new. This is all previously packaged in April 1 and then May 13.
Yeah, but the packages, at least I stayed confused with all of them, so this one might be able, one that would make me a lot more comfortable.
It's up to you.
Any other questions for staff?
Yeah, through the chair. What you just handed us included an Exhibit A, which is kind of the, the big one, if you will, summarizing a lot of the changes. Does Exhibit A encapsulate in itself all of, all of the recommendations? I mean, what, then I also have an Attachment A, which goes through a prioritization list, and I don't necessarily see Attachment A listed in Exhibit A. So if you could, help me understand whether Exhibit A sort of envelops everything, and then on Attachment A, I guess, I guess I would like to hear a little bit about your response to our request for some prioritization and how you came up with, with that, with that list.
Through the chair. Correct. Exhibit A is the base document of all staff recommendations, commission recommendations. Attachment A was the newest action we added as an amendment based on the work session we had earlier this spring, in which you, you had addressed concerns about prioritization and an accompanying map to show that. So that's what Attachment A is. It includes essentially two items that are amendments, and it's based on additional amendment language to be placed in the implementation section of the plan that addresses prioritization. The map that's at the back of your new packet tonight is a summary map showing those priorities as requested.
If I may, so if we were, if we were moving forward and going to attempt to approve with the items that, that staff recommends, it would be the original plan, Exhibit A, and Attachment A, or in addition, would we have to specify certain maps and so on and so forth?
No, you're correct. Attachment F, which is its original name, has been the running table we've kept based on the public comment. So there's items in there that are underlined that are also recommended, but they are referenced, as I think, double checking here, yes, they're referenced in Exhibit A. So we just included them to bring you up to date on those.
They're, they're referenced, additional changes herein came from recommendations presented in the December 10 packet and from items included in Exhibit F. All recommended changes to the plan are underlined and summarized below. So you're, you're saying within Exhibit A, you're taking all of the, all of the recommendations of Attachment F, and you're capturing those within Exhibit A?
That's correct.
Just so, so what I understand, we'd have the original plan, Exhibit A, and Attachment A, and that would, that would, that would cover it. Thank you.
Apologize for the paperwork. We're buried in it, too.
I've got a question. Let's presume that this is accepted, and then a month from now, we discover that there should have been another access point, Eagle River 100, for just an absolutely fictitious item. How would that access point get added to the Chughatch Access Plan? In other words, how, how would this plan be amended in the future?
Through the chair, the, the technical answer to that is, if, if it was determined that there was a new access point to be added in Eagle River right now, we have the chance to include that as a staff recommendation to the Assembly's process.
I understand that. I'm saying something totally new down the road.
Okay. So if the state decides to nominate a new site for access to be added to their plan, they would basically amend the plan? And I think it's discussed on page 95 of the document under Plan Review. It would have to come through the commission.
Okay, so...
As a plan amendment.
So if it'd come through the commission, then we'd approve it, and then it would go to the Assembly for final...
That's correct.
Adoption.
That's correct.
Anything else, Commissioner Ferguson? Commissioner Spring?
Yes, I just want to comment on Commissioner Mulcahy's comment about postponement, and I'm not, there's, it seems like there's a few of the comments from the public hearing we held a couple of months ago that you addressed in these new staff comments, I think. And you might, I'm asking, I guess, is that the case? It seems like there's about four or five that maybe might be new comments.
Through the chair. Typically, when we do these issue-response tables, they are based on the written comments we get during the, the process. So that's what these mostly are. They're summaries of written comments that we took in written testimony.
Okay. It says summary of public comments from continued public hearing.
Right. But that was the public comment period for, for written responses. It's like every case has a written response comment, comment period, so that's what that entails.
Okay. So this, there might be some comments that were delivered at the public hearing that weren't addressed here, then?
That's correct.
Thank you. Any other questions from any commissioners? I would take a positive motion to approve. And that was, I don't have, it's not showing up. I am on the floor. Yeah, I don't see it. So I guess that was you, Mr. Robinson?
I was, I was ready to go. Wait and see if it was put up.
Okay. Well, I'll take a motion to postpone if that's what we want to do. I just need a motion, something to get moving. There we go. Now we got it?
I'm gonna need to do that. I'm, I understand that, for the most part, this is all old stuff, but it's now packaged in a way that really helps me clarify what it is we're, we're supposed to act on. I've had, you know, all this stuff, all the various memorandums and stuff that we've reviewed, and I've remained confused. So hopefully, the stuff that we've been given tonight will help me feel a lot better about acting on this. So I'd like to postpone till whenever we can schedule this next, in July, I guess, second meeting, second week in July, or whatever. There's only one meeting in July, right?
That's correct.
So, I don't know, is that, is that doable?
Well, we'll take that as a motion, and...
I'll make that a motion.
Okay. And we're, Mr. Ferguson has, Commissioner Ferguson has seconded, and I guess now we'll have to take a vote by raising of our hand. If you would please, the right hand. Yes? Can we take it down? Well, I, it's not up.
Over here.
Now I can. Now mine's up. I could have counted hands by now. Do you want to count hands? Looks like we have five, and the motion has been approved to postpone until the second meeting or the only meeting that we have in the month of July. Thank you. And if we could get Connie back in here, she can continue the meeting.
That's gonna allow me time for my questions.
Sorry, Dean, I must hold over.
So we're now into the public hearings, and the procedure by which the public may speak to the commission at its meetings is, one, after the staff presentation is completed on public hearing items, the chair will ask for public testimony on the issue. Persons who wish to testify will follow the time limits established in the commission rules of procedure. Petitioners, including all his/her representatives, 10 minutes. Part of this time may be reserved for rebuttal. Representatives of groups, community councils, PTAs, et cetera, 5 minutes. And if you are a member of a group, would you please identify the group as well as your name? And if it's more than two syllables, would you please spell your name? And please state the authority that you have to represent the group. Individuals, 3 minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the commission. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the commission. An individual may have appeal rights relating to any action the Planning and Zoning Commission takes, except commission recommendations to the Assembly which are not appealable. Appeals may be filed with the clerk's office within 20 days after approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission of the resolution, which is the commission's final decision. A fee for the appeal is required at the time of filing. Any individual may request written findings from any commission decision within seven days, particularly now that we have Granicus working. So this is case 2013-073. The petitioner is Troy Davis. The request is to rezone to R2ASL, two-family residential district with special limitations. And may we have the staff presentation, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a request to rezone two parcels that contain 11.05 acres to R2ASL. That's two-family residential large lot with special limitations. The special limitation proposes a minimum of 40,000 square feet, foot lot size. The property is located in Eagle River and is owned by the Heritage Land Bank, which is in the process of disposing of the property as authorized by the Assembly with an adoption of an ordinance that, AO 2012-50 on June 5th of 2012. The petition lots are located on the north side of Muldro Street. Surrounding property is residentially developed, and the development consists primarily of single-family residential uses. Access to Track C is from Fish Hatchery Road. Access to Track B1 is from Muldro Street. A special study entitled the Chugiak Eagle River Site-Specific Land Use Plan was developed for four parcels. That plan included two of the parcels that are the current petition site, Track C and B1. Now, the site-specific land use plan recommended these parcels for residential development at one to two dwelling units per acre. The study was adopted as part of the comprehensive plan in September of 2009, and the Assembly authorized disposal of the two tracks, subject to a minimum lot size of 40,000 square feet, which is also the minimum lot area required for onsite septic systems. These properties are not served by public utilities, they're served by onsite well and septic. The requested R2ASL requiring a minimum 40,000 square foot lot size is compatible with the zoning and the residential development that has occurred in the surrounding area, which is, as mentioned, consists primarily of single-family residential uses. The two adjoining parcels have few development constraints, with generally good soils and no designated wetlands, steep slopes, or creek corridors. However, the northwest end of both parcels are wetter due to the drainage from up slope that may require mitigation during the development. And that would be addressed during the subdivision review of the parcels. The parcels have access on three sides to local neighborhood roads. Roadway maintenance is provided by the Chugiak Birchwood Eagle River Rural Road Service Area through use of private contractors. The site is not served by a pipe storm drain system, so surface runoff is handled through drainage swales and infiltration. The petition site is served by police, fire, area-wide zoning enforcement, and land use permit. It's located in Anchorage School District area and Parks and Recreation Service area. Fire Plan Review does approve access to the site, but the state fire marshal approves building plans for fire safety. Most of the surrounding property has been developed since the 1960s and 70s. There is 191-acre par, tract, which is south of the petition site. It's the largest undeveloped parcel in the area. It is zone PLI, and it also is owned by the Heritage Land Bank. However, Carroll Creek with associated type B wetlands does bisect this property, and portions of the property are steeply sloped in the southwest corner of the property. So develop, future development, if this parcel is ever disposed of, would be significantly impacted by the environmental constraints. If the rezoning is approved, development could begin in September of this year. The proposed rezoning is in conformance with the comprehensive plan, as the comprehensive plan was amended by the site-specific study that was adopted as part of the comprehensive plan. Therefore, the department does recommend approval of the request to rezone the two parcels known as Alaska State Land Survey number 2006-3, Government Lot 6, Track C, and Recreation Center subdivision, Track B1, to R2A with special limitations, district, subject to, two special limitations. The minimum lot size shall be 40,000 square feet, which was required by the Assembly when they approved disposal of the property. The second special limitation is the development of the property shall be limited to single-family residential. And that special limitation is recommended because the surrounding area is primarily developed with single-family residential uses. Staff did contact Mr. Davis and advised him of the two special limitations. He was aware of the 40,000 square foot requirement, and he stated his intention was, he had no problem with the single-family limitation, because that was his intent, provided the rezoning is approved, that was his intent as to how the property would be developed once it, the ownership transfers to him.
Thank you. We do have some questions. Commissioner Robinson?
Thank you, through the chair. Couple of questions related to the special limitations. Much of the adjacent property is R2ASL. Does that, does that R2ASL also limit the number of dwelling units that they can do on, on a lot?
Through the chair, Mr. Robinson? No, it doesn't. I looked at many, most of the surrounding lots on property appraisal to figure out what the lot sizes were, and the lots to the northwest were, that, that property was subdivided in the 1960s and was primarily developed in the 60s and 70s. There is, the special limitation on those lots is a half-acre size. And it's primarily developed with single-family residential, but there is not a limitation on the number of dwelling units.
And my, if I can, through the chair, my understanding of, having worked somewhat in reviewing that site-specific land use study several years back, that there are some duplexes in the neighborhood. Is that correct?
There are a few, but there are not that many. There is only one lot that has five units, and it's to the south. It originally had two, came in for a change order to develop the duplex and wound up putting up three units with a result that it had, it has five units. The, was in the 80s, and the permit was issued in error, and the municipality, when it went to court, was stopped from enforcing and revoking that permit. But primarily, there are few two-family, I didn't count the number of two-family. I don't know the number off the top of my head, but primarily, it's single-family to the northwest and to the east. The properties to the east, that special limitation is a one-acre minimum lot size.
And if I may, the, I know we don't always do things logically here, but it strikes me that R2 typically implies two dwelling units on a lot. It's sort of our shorthand to know what's easy or not. So if you're recommending only one dwelling per lot, why not call it R1ASL and, and sort of clarify the intent? Or just leave off the, I'm not, I guess I'm not sure where the, where the requirement for the single-family dwelling is coming, if it's not really, if it, if it was not something that's specified in the site-specific land use study. So in effect, you're, you're sort of going against something that was adopted in the comprehensive plan and kind of being a logical taboo.
Through the chair, the ordinance of, for the disposal originally said that it was required to be rezoned R7SL.
Which allows more than one dwelling unit per acre if it's over 20,000 square feet, correct?
That's correct. However, the, the defining requirement is 40,000 square feet for a single-family residential with onsite septic. I did talk with the onsite services, and I said, I asked, is there a requirement, if you, I know that they go by the number of bedrooms in terms of the onsite septic, and I said, if you have a two-family, you conceivably could have six or even seven bedrooms. What would you do in that situation for onsite septic? Because you would have double the number of bedrooms. And I looked in the code, and the code under 1565 doesn't specify by number of bedrooms if you have to have a larger lot size. And I wasn't able to get an answer other than that, if it is two structures, which is not permitted in the R2A, on a 40,000 square foot lot, and each has their own septic system, it would fall under the jurisdiction of the state. If it was one structure and it had two units, well, they just got control of duplex, they just, onsite services was just assigned responsibility for reviewing onsite septic for duplexes. And I said, well, what would you do? Would you require more area for, like, say, seven bedrooms? And I wasn't able to get an answer. And so the Assembly went back and amended its original disposal ordinance by saying it is recommended to have R7SL, but not required. So in consistency with the R2 of the surrounding area, it was recommended to go, be consistent with the zoning district of the surrounding area and limited to R, to R2ASL.
Thank you. Final question, if I may, Madam Chair. So just to follow that up, if you were going to be even more consistent with the surrounding zoning, you wouldn't limit it to one dwelling unit per lot, correct? From a, purely from a consistency standpoint?
Through the chair, Mr. Robinson, no, but from a land use pattern, consistency, I would.
Well, that's, I think that's up for us to decide. Thank you.
Ms. Dean?
Through the chair, I had a question about the 40,000-foot situation for these lots. In R6, what is the minimum size for a lot in R6 that is on well and septic?
The minimum lot size for well, for a septic, it's based on the septic system, is 40,000 square feet. But the minimum lot size in the R6 district is one and a quarter acre.
The 40,000-square-foot limitation, is that set by the state or the city?
It's the municipal regulation under 1565 that to have an onsite septic system, you might have to have a minimum 40,000 square feet. So if you are in the R1, which requires a minimum of 6,000 square feet, and you do not have access to a sanitary sewer system, public sanitary sewer system, you must have a 40,000-square-foot lot.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
I have one question, Ms. O'Brien. I think you indicated that this property would be serviced by individual well and septic systems, but on page 24, under conclusions, it says, and providing public water to each of the platted lots. So is it, is it public water, or is it individual wells?
Madam Chair, public water and sanitary sewer is not available to these lots. The closest it comes is along the Old Glen Highway. And my understanding is that there is not an intention to extend public sanitary sewer to these lots so they would be served by onsite septic and onsite well.
So the statement at the bottom of page 24 is in error. Says, "This request will be followed by a petition to replat the parcels into a subdivision of 11 lots of 40,000 square feet each, and providing public water to each of the platted lots."
If, Madam Chair, if only public water is provided, they still, and not public sewer, they still have to have 40,000 square feet, because it's the public, it's the onsite septic that requires the minimum 40,000 square feet.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out if these lots are going to be serviced by public water or wells.
I was under the assumption that they were public onsite wells. So that would be a question for the petitioner's representative.
Are you saying public well? Are you talking like a community water system?
I, I defer to the petitioner's representative.
All right. And could you, do you know how far away public water and sewer actually are? They're in the Old Glen, is that correct?
The community center to the southwest has public water and sanitary sewer, in Recreation Center subdivision to the southwest.
I'm trying to see where that is on the map. Is that where the Fire Lake Elementary School is?
It's south of the Fire Lake Elementary School. It's a lot south of that.
And what does the Fire Lake Elementary School have? Does it have public water and sewer?
I believe it does.
Could you tell me where the building is located on that parcel? Is it at the, is it at the end of the cul-de-sac? Is it, that's what that little square is on the lower left-hand corner of that parcel?
Yes, Madam Chair.
That's, that's the school? Okay.
Thank you. Are there any other questions of staff? All right, so the public hearing is now open. May we hear from the petitioner's representative, please?
Madam Chairs, members of the commission, my name is Charlie Forbes, and I'm representing the petitioner. And we agree with all of staff recommendations. And we agree with all of staff recommendations. The question about the water, it is at the northeast corner of the PLI track. It runs along the back of the lot, just to the north of that track. And what we plan on doing is extending main line through our subdivision.
Is that, is that, oh, I'm sorry. Yes, please start the timer. I think you get an extra minute. Do you have any other comments you wish to make?
No, ma'am.
All right. Are there questions of the petitioner's representative? All right, so I have a question. So then, as far as this map right here on page 12 of your packet, so are you saying where in, could you identify on this packet where the water line is?
Okay, if you look at the 3.7 acre parcel, this is PLI, that would be the furthest west piece.
This right here?
Uh, no, ma'am. Of the parcel that we're rezoning.
This is the rezone area?
Yes, ma'am. Right there, the north line of that parcel, the water line runs along the, the back of
Is that accompanied by a sewer line as well?
No, ma'am. Just water.
Where's the sewer line?
There isn't. We, we plan on septic systems.
I, I understand that. I was just wondering where the sewer line was.
I, I don't know that there's one close by.
So the Fire Lake School is on a septic system?
I have no idea.
Okay. All right. Ms. Dean.
Through the chair, my question is, is that when I do my math and I add up your two parcels together and I divide it by 11, is it 11 lots you're wanting to do? I'm coming up with just under 11 lots.
Well, your, your math is good. Actually, we're looking at purchasing a small, about 3,000 square feet from the, the lots to the north at PLI to try to stretch it out to where we can do 11 lots.
Okay, thanks.
Are there any other questions? Commissioner Mulcahy.
Just real quick, are you comfortable with the staff recommendation and the limitations as, as in the package?
Yes, sir, we are.
All right. Thank you very much. You have eight minutes and, eight minutes and 44 seconds left for your rebuttal. Is there anyone else here? Is there anyone here who wishes to testify on this matter? And case 2013-073, anyone else who wishes to testify? All right, then we have eight minutes and 44 seconds left for rebuttal. Anything? All right, seeing and hearing none, the meeting, the public hearing is closed. What is the wish of the Commission? Commissioner Mulcahy.
Madam Chair, I move to approve case 2013-073 with the recommendations as shown on page 10 of the staff package.
All right, thank you. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Parks. Commissioner Robinson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to propose, propose an amendment.
Okay.
I'd like to move that we delete recommendation number two of staff's recommendation.
Would you like to discuss your amendment?
Well, I would, simply that if you go back and actually read the land use study that had, that was written, that was adopted as an element of the comprehensive plan, it basically establishes that there are, while there are more ones than, than two-unit dwellings in the neighborhood, there are some duplexes. And it was, with a 40,000-square-foot lot size, it doesn't strike me as being totally out of character to have two units. And I, I think the other thing that I would add is that to be consistent with the zoning in the area would be to, to adopt a premise that, that doesn't limit the single-family. That's actually what is, so I, I guess my problem is twofold. One is, I, I don't think we're being consistent with what the Assembly has adopted. Number two, I don't think that R2 ASL restricting to one unit sort of makes sense from a logical standpoint. It's, again, it's implying two units. And number three, I think, while the, while the recommendation that Ms. O'Brien said or the, the sort of idea that you could develop two units with seven or eight bedrooms or something like that, you know, is possible, so also is it possible to have a small mother-in-law dwelling attached to the unit? And I think in light of, you know, housing needs in this community, having an additional dwelling in an R2 ASL that still meets onsite requirements is totally within the character of the neighborhood.
I don't disagree with that premise, but I, I do have one question. What was it that the Assembly recommended when this property was agreed to be put up for sale? Did I understand correctly that the Assembly put this property up to, for sale conditioned upon that it would be limited to single-family only?
Madam Chair, they originally, no, they didn't put a specification on single-family only.
Okay.
They recommended it be R7 SL. And the SL was that there, they required a minimum 40,000 square feet.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Spring.
Through the chair, staff, R7 only allows one dwelling unit on the site or it can't allow more than one.
R7 allows one principal structure and it allows, requires 20,000 square feet. It allows 20,000 plus an additional 20,000 square feet for each dwelling unit in excess of one. So you could have a duplex on a 40,000-square-foot lot in the R7.
Okay. Furthermore, I'd just like to comment on the amendment. It seems a little bit uncomfortable supporting the amendment, primarily because it seems to be everybody's in agreement with the rezone as it's written. I don't know what the Community Council would say if they received an amended petition that would allow more than one dwelling unit per acre. I suspect, I, I don't know this particular Community Council, but I know somehow in that area, it would probably vehemently eject anything other than a single-family. And furthermore, seems like, even though there might be a housing shortage, I'm not sure this is the appropriate place to add more housing out in the rural area of town and on a basically gravel, gravel road, I believe, that goes out there. So I won't be supporting the motion, or the amendment.
Commissioner Ferguson?
I have a question on the amendment. If we accept the amendment, what could be built there? Mr. Robinson.
May I, Madam Chair? I, I mean, I believe that if you were able to satisfy onsite and you had a 40,000-square-foot lot, you'd, you'd potentially be able to have up to a duplex. I, I think I'd just clarify that the neighborhood right now surrounding it is already zoned to allow duplexes. Even though this is not this petitioner's intent, a lot can happen between now and plating out a property. And I think we need to consider that what we're doing for a rezone is establishing a bar that's likely not to come back. It, it may be an academic argument that we're having, but I'd rather side on the argument that says we're actually being less consistent if we approve recommendation two limiting, limiting it to one, one unit.
Thank you. No further questions?
I have, I have one question. It, it seems to me if this property was serviced by public water, you could have lot sizes as small as 20,000 square feet. Isn't that correct? I mean, get rid of the, let's not talk about this particular zone. It has to have the septic for 40,000. Yep, all right, okay. Are there any other comments regarding the amendment proposed by Commissioner Robinson? Is there a second to the amendment?
A second.
All right, thank you. So it's been moved and seconded. All right, we're going to vote on the amendment. All right? All right, we're going to vote on the amendment. And because I don't think we actually have consensus, please use your machines. Actually, Dana didn't second it, it was seconded by Ms. Dean. All right, this amendment would allow up to duplexes on the property for a rezone. Please use your machines. All right, then that motion passes. Well, Ms. Dean, Ms., there we go. All right, thank you very much. All right, now back to the main motion. Commissioner Robinson.
I, I believe the main motion was someone else's.
Yes, you're correct. That was, that was Commissioner Mulcahy's and seconded by Stacy Dean. Is there any objection to the main motion? Seeing and hearing none, that motion is approved. Thank you very much.
All right, so for findings, I'm looking real quickly here on pages six, seven, and eight to see if any of the staff findings contradict what we did with. I don't think so, and I'm not finding anything that contradicts our, our amendment. So I think we can stay with the findings found on page six, seven, eight, and nine, right? Yeah.
Yes.
Anybody seen anything that contradicts the single-family? I'm not seeing anything.
All right.
I think we're okay.
All right. Thank you very much, Commissioner Mulcahy, for reminding me of the need for findings. Thank you. Moving on to case 2013-074, the petitioner is Harry S. Johnson, the rezoning to I2 Heavy Industrial District. May we have the staff presentation, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The petitioner submitted an application to rezone four parcels, B3 SL to I2, and one parcel from R5 to I2. So that's five total parcels to the Heavy Industrial District. The total land area for all five parcels is approximately 10 acres. Glacier Loop Road separates the B3 SL parcels from the R5 parcel. The petition site has several uninhabited structures that have fallen into disrepair. The B3 SL-zoned parcels have the following special limitation. Existing vegetation shall be retained or screening landscaping shall be provided along the Glen Highway east of a Clutina Lake Road. The depth of the vegetative screening shall be 30 feet. In terms of conformance to the comprehensive plan, the standard appears to be met. The Chugiak Eagle River Comprehensive Plan update from 2006 states that the comprehensive plane, the comprehensive plan industrial classification is primarily intended for existing and future industrial development. The locational criteria for industrial are areas with established, areas with an established primarily industrial development pattern, areas large enough for more intense industrial uses, and areas with access to truck routes without the need to travel through incompatible uses. The current zoning of the petition site may be, may not be appropriate because of the current and planned land uses surrounding the site, which are primarily industrial. Also, the petition site contains 10 acres, which is large enough to support intense industrial uses. Furthermore, the petition site has direct access onto the Glen Highway via Denaina Elders Road. The petition site has remained vacant for many years. It will not realistically be developed for residential or commercial uses in the foreseeable future due to the incompatibility with the nearby industrial uses. The petition site is surrounded on three sides with a temporary lay-down yard during construction of a nearby MEA power generation plant. Clutina Inc. has provided a letter stating that they intend to seek a rezone of the temporary lay-down yard and the B3 SL properties southwest of this petition site to industrial, to an industrial district. Also, there's an I1 SL-zoned water bottling plant located southwest of the petition site. And Clutina Inc. owns all the properties surrounding this petition site. Let's see here. The proposed rezone to I2 is congruent with the existing and planned industrial uses in the adjacent, that are adjacent to the petition site. The Department recommends approval of the rezoning to I2 subject to the following special limitation. Screening landscaping shall be provided along the Glen Highway. The depth of the vegetative screen shall be 30 feet. A draft Assembly ordinance is on page seven of your packet. The Assembly ordinance which rezone this property to B3 SL is on page, from 1984, is on page 37 of your packet. I'd be happy to answer any questions. The petitioner has come prepared to make a presentation as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The public hearing is open and maybe, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see. I apologize. Commissioner Ferguson?
We had a supplemental comments laid on the table issued tonight. Could you address that, please?
Thank you for the question, Mr. Ferguson. This morning, the, the petitioner emailed a, a document to us and we've reproduced it here for the, for the Commission. These are laid on the table. And, you know, I've spoken with petitioner about this. He's arguing that the, that the, that the property should be rezoned to I2, but without a special limitation, the one recommended by, by the Department. And he, I guess, sort of on page, page two of that, I'm sorry, page one of, of his comments, says the applicant's property is not adjacent to the Glen Highway, it abuts Glacier Loop Road. Well, he's correct that it abuts Glacier Loop Road, but Glacier Loop Road is within the, the highway, right-of-way, and so the property does abut, abut the highway. And we have cases of this all across, you know, between Boniface and Muldoon Road where you have properties that have a frontage road between the highway and the properties. Whisperwood is one of those developments and they, they're providing either a 30-foot highway screening easement, or they're providing 20 feet plus an eight-foot side obscuring fence. So in terms of that A, point A that he makes, the property does abut the highway in terms of the right-of-way. It B, he says, an adequate vegetative screening buffer already exists. Well, he's taken a number of photos showing that there's mature vegetation sort of in the ditch off the highway where the, the fence is protecting the highway from, you know, animals running on it and that. And so he's saying there's adequate vegetation there. However, the property already has this special limitation. We've reworded it a little bit, but, but it, the requirement for highway screening landscaping is already there. It's been there since 1984. It'll also be required in the new code when that takes effect. Point C, he said, given A and B, the special limitation is not necessary, it's redundant and provides an undue financial hardship on, on, on the petitioner. So he's arguing not to have the special limitation. We, we've talked also with the petitioner, the, the structures that he has on the property that he thinks may sit within that 30-foot vegetative buffer requirement, he, he's, he's likely to be able to establish grandfather rights for those, those structures. So it, you know, further questions in relation to this, you could, I would recommend that you direct to the, to the applicant.
I'd like to continue one other question. Are we requiring this because it was already a special limitation on the property before? Or are we requiring this because it's in section 21.45.130 of Title 21, existing Title 21?
Well, it's not required, with, through the chair, Mr. Ferguson, it's not required in existing code. It's, it's, there's a don't- There's a donut hole here, right? So in 1984, the area-wide rezoning specified that all this B-3 property must have highway screening, okay? But the hotel that was on there, the, I think it was a diner, these structures that have fallen into disrepair that are on the parcel, preexisted the zoning, and they were within this 30 feet. And so we've already, we've found the land use permits that were granted for these structures. So the petitioner's in the process of establishing grandfather rights to have buildings, you know, within the setback and in this vegetative buffer that was placed on it 10 years later. The structures went in in 1974, before the highway was widened. And so, I'm sorry, to make this simple, the special limitations from 1984 require there to be existing vegetative buffer. He'll be able to establish grandfather rights. The existing code does not require highway screening landscaping north of Peters Creek. The new code will extend that requirement from Peters Creek to the end of the municipality. Hope that was understandable.
Commissioner Spring?
Sorry, one of the things in the packet was mentioned was regarding the plans for the municipality of Anchorage, planning department, to seek a kind of an area-wide rezoning of this area. And it seemed like what was implied was that this was required in order to bring into consistency this rezoning with the land use map of Chugiak Eagle River Comp Plan. And I was wondering if you had any reference to any legal opinions that might be out there regarding the consistency requirements between the comp plan and zoning in Chugiak Eagle River?
Thank you. Through the chair, Mr. Spring. I don't have any reference to legal opinions. What I can tell you is that the department wants to bring forward of its own volition an amendment to the land use plan map for the Chugiak Eagle River Comprehensive Plan, but did not want to bring just these five parcels in for that amendment concurrently with this application now, but instead wants to bring it together with other parcels that are owned by Clutina Inc. We're in discussions right now with Clutina Inc. pre-application meetings for rezoning the temporary lay-down yard and other parcels surrounding this petition site. And we want to, instead of bring forward amendment to the comprehensive plan, sort of ad hoc, parcel by parcel, we'd like to bring them all in at once.
Through the chair. It seems like it would be more rational to take a comprehensive approach to the rezoning of the area, especially if the municipality, it seems to be inalienable to that. But do you know whether or not the Denina Elders Road, which I think is the main access to the Glen Highway, is that paved?
Portions, through the chair, Mr. Spring, portions of it are paved and a majority of it is not. When you come off of, when you take the exit to Clutina Village, you know, I don't know how many feet it is, I think you go past the water bottling plant. It's paved right up until a portion of the site, and then it becomes the gravel road all the way out to the new power plant.
And one more follow-up question would be it. The power plant, it seems like, has minimum truck traffic probably, once it starts up. Probably during construction, there was quite a bit. But I'm a little bit concerned regarding the ability of a paved gravel road to handle heavy industrial traffic, and whether or not it could hold up, and whether or not Subversa, for instance, if they're, I'm assuming they're probably the maintenance, street maintenance entity for that area, has any comments on it, and whether or not that will eventually have to be upgraded to accommodate this type of I-2 zoning.
Through the chair, Mr. Spring. On page 27 of the packet, the traffic engineer has no comment on the rezon request. Page 33 of the packet, Subversa, which you referred to, Mark Littlefield, he writes, "The Eagle River Street Maintenance Staff has reviewed the plans. This specific area in the road that abuts these lots is not maintained by Subversa. If future development occurs, the roads are subject to development to Eagle River Street Maintenance." Are subject to development, Eagle River Street Maintenance would like to comment at that point. The Subversa Board of Supervisors may have additional comments and concerns that will be forwarded to you. Well, I think, so I think that they had no objection to the rezon, but that at the time of development, it'll be looked at whether or not the road needs to be paved, whether or not to compel the developer to pave the road or a portion of it. That's all we have for comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Ferguson?
Ma'am?
Yes? You have no more comments?
No.
All right. And Commissioner Robinson, are you in the queue or not?
Yes, I am, thank you, Madam Chair. I guess I, follow up to Mr. Spring's questions, you know, under conformance to comprehensive plan, what I understand is that currently the plan map shows these parcels as R-5 and B-3. And so I'm struggling with the comment to say that what we're approving is actually consistent with the comprehensive plan. The comment that you make at the end of Section A is that the department is planning to submit a plan amendment to the Planning and Zoning Commission to update that land use plan map. What I would understand is, and when I believe we've seen rezones come in previously, that carried concurrently an update to the plan map, because otherwise I don't know how we can state that it's in conformity with the comprehensive plan. I think we can state that it's in character with the surrounding neighborhood, but I have trouble with that comment. And I wonder why the department, even though you intend to bring some larger effort back, why you've broken from sort of recent practice to just do that cleanup as we go?
Through the chair, I, you know, I agree with everything that you said. That's correct. Thank you for correcting my misstatement that, in fact, the Chugiak Eagle River Comp Plan identifies the property as residential and commercial, not as industrial. We intend to bring forward a change to the comprehensive plan to show it as industrial. And we want to do that with a forthcoming application by Clutina Inc. to rezon all this property for industrial. And, you know, the timing is not, the timing is not there. But the rezon seems to be a no-brainer.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, may we hear from the petitioner's representative?
My name is Harry Johnson, and I am the petitioner. I'd like to start my comments this evening by thanking the city staff for their help, and also to thank you for your service. I believe firmly that one of the most important parts of any free country is the right for individuals to own and control property. When our society becomes more sophisticated, however, and the population grows, the needs of the community sometimes come in conflict with the desires of the person who owns the property. And that's where you sit, on that potential abrasive union between those two things. And you're occupying a rather thankless job, and I'm not, I don't mean to butter you up, that's not the intent of it. I know your job is thankless. Nobody here to say hurrah for you. And you're here as an act of service, by and large. And I appreciate that. And even though we may be, we may disagree, we can agree to be agreeable in doing so, and I will leave here realizing that I've had my day in court. And that probably is an appropriate analogy, because there's nine of you, the same number we have on the Supreme Court. And I suspect you disagree not as often as the Supreme Court does when it's appropriate. Now that being said, I agree with everything that the staff has recommended, and I would be more than delighted to answer any questions you have. Mr. Spring, by the way, that road is, was required by MEA to be paved. They're just waiting until they get that huge turbine in there so it doesn't destroy the road when they transport those turbines in. There's three of them going in. I am a reluctant petitioner. I have owned this property since 99, and I have had plans to develop on several occasions, each time being derailed by one issue or another. The economy hit me, I had a son killed unexpectedly, I had on and on and on sorts of things. I have objected to the MEA power plant vehemently because, and the lay-down yard that surrounds my property, which has more than $300,000 in the dirt already for a subdivision, a PUD, three big septic tanks, underwater, underground water wells, all of that stuff already in place. But it is surrounded by industrial property. And the highest and best use for that property on that exchange is undoubtedly, in my mind, industrial at this point. And for me to try to continue to do residential there is insane. I do have one point of disagreement with the staff. And if you would look at this, let me talk to you just for a second about this property. I've owned it since 99. It was developed in 75. And at the time it was developed, the city required the developer to put in 10,200 and some square feet of parking lot since 1975. That area that will be required to add an additional 30 feet, not only will it be 20% of Lot 1, but it will also be where for 35 years, there's been asphalt and gravel and never a tree. So it's going to be not only expensive, see, that place was put in well before the Glen Highway, 10 years or so before the Glen Highway was even constructed. It was a growing, wonderful business. When the Glen Highway came in, the business went belly up. Traffic pattern's gone. No need for a bar and a restaurant and a motel anymore there. And I bought it from the daughter of the people that developed it initially. My feelings on this matter, though, are not strong enough that I would, I'm not, I think the grandfather clause, I think there's other things that can be done for the potential developer, because it probably won't be me that develops it. I'm not an industrial kind of developer. There's other things that they can do to, if it becomes appropriate, to try to do this. But the SL designation, I think, is inappropriate for all of the reasons in the packet. The pictures will show that there's more than 30 feet already of screening material between this property and the Glen Highway. It's a slippery slope when you start saying, okay, this portion of this road is actually part of the Glen Highway, but this, the rest of the, you know, the road isn't part of the Glen Highway. I'm not sure I understand that logic. That being said, I would prefer that you vote against my request and approve it as I-2 now than postpone it and study it. For a couple of reasons. I'm actually one of only three owners on that exchange. All of that property on that side of the Glen Highway is owned, I own 10 acres, the Clutina Inc. owns everything except the 70 acres they just sold to MEA. And then there's four acres right there for the bottling plant. That's it. And if I'm going to have to develop it as industrial, I'd like to get it done and over with. I'd like to get my property sold and move on with my life.
Mr. Johnson, I don't mean to interrupt you, but you have three minutes and approximately 30 seconds.
I'm done.
And I just wanted to know if you wanted to retain some time for rebuttal? Because I do see people here in the audience, I have no idea if they wish to testify or not.
Thank you so much, ma'am. I appreciate that. I got more wordy than I intended to. I'm open for questions, if anyone has questions of me.
Are there any questions? All right, thank you very much. All right, is there anyone here who wishes to testify on this matter? Anyone at all? All right, so, Mr. Johnson, you have three minutes and 30 seconds. Oh, excuse me, Commissioner Mulcahy, do you, all right, thank you. Mr. Johnson, do you have anything else that you would like to say that is specific to the case before us this evening?
I would just like to finish that thought, that parking lot, in order to change that and put over 100 trees on it and make them live, along with 500 bushes, it's going to cost $50,000. And it's not going to accomplish anything that isn't already accomplished. Not only that, it's being done on a piece of property that's been in existence, developed well before, 10 years before the Glen Highway was even constructed, when there wasn't a need for screening materials on the Glen Highway at all. So it may not have been 10 years, but it was clearly before the Glen Highway. I'm throwing that number out there, I'm not sure exactly. I think it was about '84 when the Glen Highway was made into a four-lane, if I'm not mistaken, right in there somewhere.
All right, thank you very much. Did you have anything else?
No, ma'am.
All right. But Commissioner Mulcahy, did you have a question of the petitioner or staff?
No, I can look at the staff if I could.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, so my question to the staff, I apologize, I don't think I've been on this commission, we've done much with industrial. So if we zone this, improve the zoning tonight, what happens when someone goes to develop it? Does this ever come back to us again as a developer, as an industry starts to move in there?
Through the chair, Mr. Mulcahy, tonight, the commission can agree with staff and recommend to the assembly that the property be rezoned to Heavy Industrial I-2 with a special limitation. And if the assembly approves it a month or two from now, when the zoning goes into effect, then nothing will return to the commission unless somebody applies, the developer of the property applies for a conditional use on the property. If they develop it with a permitted use, then the commission wouldn't see the development. That's all.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any other questions? So, are there questions?
So I have a question. Can you run us by the history of the landscaping easement one more time? In particular, the history of it, and what is the current requirement? Not the future requirement for Title 21, because we're not there yet. So what is the current requirement?
Yes, Madam Chair. The property, the petition site was developed, there's five parcels, and the parcel that's closest abutting the highway or abutting Glacier Loop Road, closest to the highway, that one parcel, that was developed with a number of structures, some sort of hotel or diner, there's a cabin on it, there's some structures on there that appear to be in deep disrepair. But anyway, they're there. And those were built there sometime, 1974 was one of the land use permits for those buildings. And the petitioner spoke to some of the parking that was required to be there in association with those buildings, a required parking lot, off-street parking. Okay, so the property was developed in 1974, and then the property went from the T-zoning or U-zoning, I don't know, it's in the back of the packet, went from one of those zonings to B-3SL. And the SL said, "You must provide, retain, natural vegetative buffer of 30..." And the SL said, you must, you must provide, retain natural vegetative buffer of 30, 30 feet. It was the, sort of the precursor to the highway screening landscaping. It said, and I could read it for you, but it says that retain the existing or plant anew a 30-foot wide natural vegetative buffer on that parcel. That was never done, but the applicant was eligible for grandfather rights not to have to, you know, provide some of that landscaping because of the structures and because of the required parking. And now, the applicant's going, going to go back and establish those grandfather rights that he's entitled to. So, right now, if the property's not rezoned, it's required to have that highway or screening landscaping, with the exception that he's eligible for grandfather rights that haven't been determined yet. Okay? So, existing code does not require highway screening landscaping out there. What requires the highway screening landscaping out there is this special limitation on the property that's been in effect since 1984, but took effect after these structures were placed on there in 1974. So, when the, the new code takes effect in 2015, then there'll be highway screening landscaping required there. So from, from the time that the Assembly approves this, this rezone to 2015, if it's developed without that special limitation that the department is recommending to carry forward, then there'll be no highway screening landscaping required. If you carry forward the, the special limitation which we're recommending, then, then they would still be required to have this highway screening landscaping up until it becomes part of the, it would, it would be congruent with the way it is now in its zoning and the way it will be in, when the new code takes effect.
I don't care about the future.
Okay.
The new code.
Yeah.
I only care about what is today. So, thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Because we're not enforcing the new code. All right. Commissioner Robinson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just trying to make sense of this as well. If I look at 2145-130, and it's screening along major highways, it basically states that there's requirements to provide for screening and, and within these zoning districts of the, the 30 feet, and I, I think our issue here is it not that under applicability, it says be adjacent to the right-of-way of the Glen Highway or to streets serving as its frontage roads east of Boniface Parkway and west of Peters Creek? So is it, is it simply that because this area falls outside of that parameter, and the new code is intending to sort of capture all of that, that area, that in, in, in the interim, it has been the department's sort of policy to make consistency done through plating and zoning actions to sort of capture that, rather than just kind of clean up that section of code?
Yes, to the first part, Mr. Robinson. Yes, that because the highway screening landscaping in current code stops at Peters Creek and does not continue out to the end of the municipality, yes, that's why they placed the special limitation back in 1984 and why we're continuing it forward. But I, I don't know that there's been a policy to, that, to, to add special limitations on rezoning property along the Glen Highway between Peters Creek and, and, and the end of the municipality in other cases. I can only speak, that's what we're doing here, but I don't know about it being, you know, something that we've been doing before. It's the first time I've seen this sort of special limitation.
Great. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? All right. The public hearing is closed. What is the wish of the commission? Commissioner Spring.
Yes, Madam Chair. I'd like to, in the case of 2013-074, like to move to recommend approval of the rezoning from 10 acres from R5 and B3 SL to I-2 with no special limitations. And I'd like to speak to that after a second.
All right. And we are seconded by Commissioner Mulcahy. So would you speak to your motion, Mr. Spring?
Yes, I would. Seems to me that landscape, the current requirements should apply, and we shouldn't enforce the future requirements for 30-foot landscaping, particularly given my experience, I guess, as a long-range transportation planner. There is no anticipated, in the foreseeable future, to expand that part of the highway from four lanes to six lanes. If there was some type of movement or some type of plan that said that there might be a need for that screening in that area, then I would say, yes, we should require some type of highway screening in order to, particularly to, to protect, visually protect with that industrial development that's going to happen there. But there's already natural vegetation along the road between, Glen Highway between Glacier and the highway proper, that's sufficient to screen the area from any industrial use. And I do agree with the petitioner that this would be a redundant requirement, particularly since other, it's unique, appears to be unique to this parcel.
All right. Thank you very much. Commissioner Robinson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to propose an amendment.
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to amend the recommendation for rezone with the following statement, that the rezone should also be considered as an amendment of the 2006 Chugiak Eagle River Comp Plan Update Land Use, Land Use Plan Map Update to Industrial Classification.
All right. Thank you very much. Do we have a second to that motion?
Is it a friendly amendment?
It's a, it's a, yes.
Vote on it.
So is there any, I still get that all confused. So.
I would like, if, do I have to say it's a friendly amendment?
Yes.
Or agree that it's a friendly amendment?
Yes.
I guess my question would be to staff then, before I agree, is whether or not there's certain public hearing requirements that need to be complied with prior to making an amendment to the comprehensive plan? Or is that my misinterpreting the amendment?
Commissioner Robinson.
Well, I guess I'd defer to staff on that, but here, if I could speak to it and then let staff respond. My point is, I, I don't think I can, can support the recommendation for rezone without also formally making this revision to the comprehensive plan, because I can't say that the, that the classification conforms to the comprehensive plan as, as it stated. And I, I think we break from current practice by, by not cleaning that up. So, so to me, I was attempting to let it move forward in an expedient fashion, rather than sort of saying no until it comes back. Whether that's consistent with notice provisions, good question.
Through the chair, Mr. Spring, you're correct that the only advertised request before the commission is the rezone and not a plan amendment. The plan amendment process requires public notification.
Yes.
I guess I would have trouble making something that was a friendly amendment if it's contradicted by the requirements for public. Perhaps I might suggest, I'm not sure what the, the option is, what the solution is. We could either, one, urge the planning staff to make it a priority to follow through with their proposed area-wide rezoning, or we could make it contingent upon, this rezoning contingent upon the resolution of the contradiction or inconsistency with the comp plan.
Well, the latter is really going to delay the petitioner's ability to proceed with marketing the property for sale, which is what his desired intent is.
I, Madam Chair, I, so then maybe the additional finding might be
Finding.
That we urge the planning department to expeditiously follow through with their commitment to seek a comp plan amendment.
Which they have previously stated was their intent, and so we're just simply urging them along.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Ferguson.
My concern here is the applicant tonight is sort of kinda in the cage with the great big gorilla in on this amendment to the comp plan. I mean, he's a very small player, and you've got a Klutner, which is a larger player there, and a Klutner's timeline might be totally different than his timeline, and that concerns me. And that's the reason why I, I seconded the motion was, I did not, you know, a Klutner could, for their own very good and valid reasons, say, we want to wait two years. And they have no concern over your issues. And so I, I seconded that, but I also understand very clearly the, the qualms that puts us in. And if Mr. Robinson can't come up with a, an answer, I may have to withdraw my second.
He may indeed. He's in the queue.
Well, I was, I was simply going to suggest, given the conversation, that I will withdraw my motion.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. We're back to the motion from Mr. Spring, and, which was seconded by Commissioner Ferguson, if I recall correctly. Uh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Mulcahy. So please make a note of that. Is there any objection to the motion? Seeing and hearing none, that motion is approved. Thank you very much. All right.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
If I could just, and I'll, maybe Mr. Spring can add some, but I think a finding that I would like to make is that we supported the recommendation for this rezone on the basis that staff has indicated that they plan to go forward with an amendment to the comprehensive plan. I, I think I'd like to say, given that, that the, their analysis for the rezone considered an evaluation of the surrounding land use, that their suggestion that that would be an appropriate land use change is, is a reasonable one. That said, in the future, I, I would like to see, I don't like seeing the sort of cart before the horse here, and I feel like the public should be noticed that that's in fact what's, what's part of the process. So I don't hold it against the petitioner if he's told by the staff that they support the rezone because they're going to come back with an amendment, but, but I think that should be done as a matter of fact. But with that, I think also the rezone is otherwise consistent with the surrounding land uses and the other goals of the comprehensive plan.
All right. Thank you very much. Are there, Mr. Spring, did you want to add anything?
Yes, Madam Chair. Just to add that there, according to staff and land use analysis, there appears to be a shortage of heavy industrial land, not only in Chugiak Eagle River, but in the entire municipality of Anchorage, and this rezone helps supply that demand.
All right. Thank you very much. Anything else? All right. There are no appearance requests, as I understand it. There are some reports. Vice Chair Parks, you had an announcement you wanted to make about July 8th?
Yes. The mayor has invited us to come to the meeting that they're having, the Denine Center, on July 8th for the redevelopment of the Ship Creek area. They're having a presentation down there. Larry Baker mentioned that to me today. If you would like to go, if you would either drop Connie or our email, we'll make sure that we have a seat or a table available for us all. And the mayor's going to pay for it. That's the good news. It's at the Denine Center, and I believe it's 11:30 for lunch on July 8th, and I'll, I'll confirm that. I didn't write that.
It doesn't constitute a public meeting if more than three of us show up, does it?
It does not.
It does not? Okay.
Not in that case. We're going to a public event for, not to talk about anything other than what's happening in our city.
All right. Very good. If the mayor's buying lunch, I guess we should all try to attend, and that is on a Monday. And we will be having our regular meeting that eve, that evening as, as well. And I do believe that meeting starts at 6:00 PM, but we'll confirm that and give you plenty of notice. I think that's the meeting where we're going to have parliamentary procedure, which was postponed previously because I wasn't at last week's meeting. And because I need it more than anyone else, I asked them to do it in July. All right. Anything else? Commissioner Spring.
These are committable words, you said?
Yes, please.
Yes, I was, I attended the UMed District Public Meeting Tuesday, Public Meeting Visioning. And I asked, when you were absent last time, I asked if it would be appropriate if I go there. I didn't, I'm not clear exactly what our relationship is with that study at this point. I'm not su, I missed the meeting where we were signing committees, so maybe you guys discussed it. But is there going to be a person appointed to the UMed District liaison? And is, if there is, is it going to be part of the Citizen Advisory Committee? And, this is my question.
Well, I'm not aware of this, of who is on the Citizens Advisory Committee for the UMed District. We have had one briefing on it. I don't know if you were present for that.
I was.
You were present for that. I've had one follow-up conversation with one of the consultants regarding housing and the cost of housing and type of housing and the lack of workforce housing in Anchorage. But certainly, thank you for attending, and if you would like to be a liaison to that, those meetings, that would be most welcome.
Okay. And also, if, I guess there's a director's meeting on the 20th, I think.
That is correct.
And I won't be there. Could you ask the director whether or not this liaison will be a member of their Citizen Advisory Committee?
I'm sorry, what, whether?
Would you ask the director at the meeting on the 20th whether or not this liaison will be part of the Citizen Advisory Committee, and if so, to send me notices of the meetings?
All right. And if you could just send me an email
Okay.
to follow up with that question, I, I would really appreciate it.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much. Title 21, Commissioner Robinson, anything?
No. And just to clarify, I mean, I don't know that I, I have an active role at this point. I mean, my understanding is they're, they're sort of wrapping things in, but just to be clear, I, I want to make sure I'm not missing something on expectation from the group. But, but my knowledge is, staff is piecing together the changes, putting it together into a document that would be then reviewed by the community and, and take effect as an optional tract January 1st. But, but other than that, I'm, you know, I don't have, there's, there's, there is no sort of standing committee. If there is a need to review things, I'm happy to review changes or amendments as they come forward.
I think it is important that we be kept informed of amendments. As I understand it, that would, they would be proposed at the assembly level, and then if they were a substantive, they would come back to planning and zoning for additional review. But I am very interested in seeing that that final document is completed and goes online.
Madam Chair, I will, I will find out the status and advise the body at the next meeting.
All right. Okay. Very good. Thank you.
I've been told most of it's already online.
Most of it is online?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe that's correct.
All right. Very good. Commissioner Robinson and Ferguson, the Design Criteria Manual Committee.
I've got a list of, a list of ideas, and I will circulate it before our next meeting.
All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. I also have a proposed resolution, and I'll forward that to you regarding the Design Criteria Manual Public Review Process. All right. Long Range Plan, RFP and Policies and Procedures, Ms. Dean, any, anything?
No, I'm not clear as to exactly what I'm supposed to be doing at this time. Should I be contacting somebody with the planning department to get with them? Or how should I proceed, do you think?
Well, Ms. Wong is in charge of the Long Range Plan, Planning Department. I think what would be advisable would be for you to check with her, either in person with a meeting or vis-à-vis a phone call or email. What I think the commission is interested in doing is keeping abreast of proposed RFPs, because that's where we can have, where we have had no input in the past, and where I think input is important, because in the last couple of plans that we've reviewed, there doesn't seem to be any sort of financial or economic analysis in terms of how these plans are going to be implemented. So I think the commission is interested in seeing RFPs before they go out to bid.
Yes, I'll contact you this week.
All right. Thank you. Permitting Process Streamlining Committee, Commissioner Ferguson.
That is the one I was referencing, really, actually. That's the one I've got some ideas on.
You've got some ideas on that.
Yeah.
All right. Thanks.
I've done some work.
You've done some work. All right. Thank you. AMATS Committee, Spring and Mulcahy, comments? No? Spring? All right. And Airport Master Plan. Look at all the people interested in the Airport Master Plan. Commissioner Perouse.
Yeah, I'll be attending the, a stakeholders' meeting on the 8th, let's see, the 13th.
Okay.
And the airport has rolled out four alternatives for the long-range plannings for airport expansion should the volume and traffic require it. And, and so there's a stakeholders' group that they, that's been sitting at the table that they will take feedback from, and it'll be, that's this week.
All right. Thank you very much. What are they going to do with the 20? What are they going to do with the Tony Knowles Coastal Trail?
It depends on the, well, they've committed not to get rid of it.
Right.
And it depends on the level of growth that the airport has and the alternatives, you know, the four alternatives, that being one of four, to put an airport 1,100 feet to the west of the existing north-south runway.
All right. Commissioner Spring?
I'd be really interested, Dana, if, when they have, get to the point where they have forecasts available, maybe they could give us a little presentation or something regarding that, because I think that's the crux of the plan. And I know there's been a lot of controversy about that in the past, and as a planning and zoning commission, we, I think we have, I don't know if we have any insight, but it'd be interesting for us to take a look at it and maybe comment on it.
I do.
All right. Thank you very much. How many of you will be able to attend the director's meeting on the 20th? One, two, three, four? Four or so. All right. Thank you. And don't forget July 8th. Is there a motion for adjournment? Commissioner Parks?
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded by Commissioner Perouse. Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.
I'll tell you where to work, Dana.